Okay, well, uh, get ready to get going here. And, uh, first of all, I'd ask Carl Timon to offer the hoping prayer and then after that Scott Spencer will lay us in the pledge. We'll go to that point.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful for this day and it's time now to meet together to discuss the needs of Payson City. We're grateful that we can live here and work here and enjoy the area here within Payson. We're grateful for the city fathers and their efforts and time and sacrifice they make to serve the community at large. We ask you to bless us that we may have open minds and clarity of thought as we discuss the issues of the night, that we can make the best decisions possible for all involved in this, we pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Will the audience please rise? Please repeat the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, before we get started, I'd like to know that we allow you to amend the agenda as you see fit.
Okay, we've got a motion to amend the agenda as I see fit. We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay. Motion approved. Next thing is the consent agenda for the approval of November fifteenth council meeting minutes and November twenty-first special council meeting minutes. Do we have a motion or do we have any discussion on that?
Mayor, I'm going to agree with the consent agenda as outlined.
Okay, we're in motion. Second. We've got a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay, motion carries. Next thing is the public hearing, or public forum, and we will open it up to the public for comments. And we'll give you five minutes. If you have anything to say, come up to the microphone. Please don't just shout it from down there and it's all being recorded. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public forum.
Wait a minute.
Oh, we got one. Okay.
I was just wondering if there's anything that we can do about that awful steak that keeps going into Payson. This is coming right off of them bean farms. It's genuine bean steak.
Um, I think most of that's in the county and I don't know...
It's all in the county, isn't it?
It's all in the county.
Well, I'll tell you one thing, it's upsetting a lot of people in Payson and that should be of some value to you.
So, I think one of the things that needs to be done, where it is a county issue, is you need to send messages to Commissioner Ivy, Commissioner Graves, and Commissioner Lee. That's their area and we fought and asked them not to approve the latest bean farm and we did anyway.
All right, well, that was my...
But I agree.
Yeah, it stinks terribly.
Agreed.
Well, that was my next step. I just wanted to see if there was anything here first. I thought it would be nice, I mean, this is a concern, even though it's in the county, it is a concern of the Payson City Council because it affects people in Payson.
All right. We've got a lot of comments on it. I know I have.
I had to. I mean, we're forwarding our information to the county, but they are the ones that have to make the decision. We can't...
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Dave, I know we have noise ordinances and sound ordinances. Are there any stench ordinances that we can reach out to the county on?
We can talk to the county, but I have to reach out to them. Our nuisance ordinance feels just within the threshold of limits, so we got to see if the county...
But I know the county's got noise ordinances.
Yeah, I don't know what the county has as far as smell or...
Smoke.
The particular bean farm is on our city boundaries. About four, five months ago, they went to the county and applied for, it's called an ag protection zone, and that process was not successful for those who live in that area. And it actually protects them from nuisance suits. So, they are even more protected in their activities than the normal citizens.
So, I'm not quite sure I understood that. You say they got that approved?
Yes.
Or they didn't...
They approved the ag protection zone and when the ag protection zone is placed over that...
Yeah, I understand that. I just, I was under the impression they hadn't got that approved, so yeah, that's why I asked for that verification.
They did. And there was about forty, fifty citizens that live in that area and they did attend the public hearings at the county. So did we. It was, we went to both Planning Commission, the Ag Protection Board, and City Council. When I say lead the city, I represented the city in each of those meetings and it was unsuccessful. The Planning Commission actually recommended denial and they didn't act that way and they went ahead and granted it.
So, the commissioners went ahead and approved that?
Exactly. And what it does is it, as long as they hold themselves within the industry standard of bean farm raising, they're protected from that type of a situation with smell and those types of things, from nuisance suits.
So, what's the definition of a nuisance?
That would be the noise ordinance, the smell ordinance, things that are too bright at night. As a matter of fact, bean farms can require neighbors to shut off their lights at night because it upsets the breeding cycle of the bean. I don't have good news, but I do know that that matter was in front of the county council and they chose not to protect the citizens, but they protected the bean farm itself.
We'll look into it. Anybody else for a public forum? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public forum. We'll go with the council reports. Council, or I mean staff. Seeing no staff. Oh, we got one.
Mayor, council, just want to mention a few things tonight. Thanks to all those that came out and seen Santa last night. I appreciate Santa coming to the police department and visiting with some of our citizens, so it worked out really well. We've had several autoburbs in the last little, I guess, last little while, but just kind of remind our citizens that we keep our stuff locked up and most of them are a credible opportunity. The cars are locked, so again, caution you to keep your vehicles locked. We got our last two speed, radar speed signs will be going up pretty soon on Ninety West and South Main Street, so we look forward to seeing those. Just a reminder that snow removal is in effect, so we're out trying to get people to move their cars up the street before it does snow out, out the snowplow drivers. I just want to give you a month, a report that I got from Utah County Major Crimes Task Force for October. Utah County Major Crimes Task Force made thirty-four felony arrests and thirty-one misdemeanor arrests. The amount of drugs seized in methamphetamine was thirty-one point seventy-seven pounds, which is equal to one point two million doses, personal doses. Heroin was two point three-three pounds, marijuana was fifty-five pounds, cocaine was point eight-seven pounds, LSD was ninety doses, prescription drug doses was two thousand nine hundred fifty-five. They also seized sixteen hundred, or sixteen thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars in cash. So, I just hope we still have a big problem out there and they're doing their best to help us out with that. Just to kind of update of the end of October stats for the police department. The police department made one hundred and seventeen arrests with two hundred and twenty-nine offenses, issued two hundred and twenty-three citations, resulted in two hundred and seventy-nine violations. We handled eleven hundred and seventy-three calls for service, made seven DUI arrests, three hundred and ninety-eight traffic stops, and investigated thirty-two traffic accidents. So, kind of a busy month. I think that's it. I should have questions.
Eric, thank you. Any other staff?
Just to mention, I didn't see Janine here, but just to mention, this Friday and Saturday is the Petite Need Christmas Boutique. The Petite Needs, free admission, there's a lot of entertainment, specifically on Saturday at three-thirty is the Nebofield Harmonic Orchestra, so if you can take some time to come out, it's going to be a great weekend.
Okay. Any other? Any? Mike?
Yeah, I have a couple of items, a number of items, Mayor. The Interfaith Council has scheduled their Helping Hands Dinner, which is going to be the twenty-third of February. I've spent one of those before, it's a lot of fun, have some auction going on, raising money to help the poor, and that's going to be the twenty-third from six to eight. They're also going to be celebrating a Christmas mass for Kent Boykin and his, I'm not sure if, maybe you know if it was more than just Kent and his congregation.
I think it's congregation.
They're going to be out at the Veterans Home on Christmas Eve, I believe it's at seven-thirty. It'll be a unique opportunity to go out and help celebrate with the veterans and hear what Pastor Boykin had to say.
Did you get the time on that?
Seven-thirty, I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
As I'm going to be off the council, I just did want to say that it's been a great opportunity to have, to work with the Interfaith Council, there are a lot of good people there and they've had a lot of good events. Our mayor was a big part of getting that organized and set up. I thank him for his opportunity that we have. There is going to be a ribbon cutting in the chamber and I, we have some representatives here, so maybe you can talk about that. I can write down the information on that. Did want to say that the board members of the chamber have been out visiting businesses and are encouraged to visit at least two businesses a month. It's a good opportunity to make sure the business feels welcome here in Payson and would like to mention their efforts and if you have the opportunity to support them, that's a great thing, too. Small Business Saturday was held in November and what happens is Chris is kind enough to allow them to use her theater and they raised a lot of food. I understand there's a lot of food to take away, again, for the youth for the poor and so we want to thank the chamber for that. The annual Chamber Rewards banquet will be in February on the seventh. Locations to be finalized, but it'll be at six-thirty P.M. And that's all I have.
Doug?
That's a lot. It's more than I have. I just want to thank Janine for her light turning on ceremony and the Main Street Mile or Santa Run or whatever it was. She spends a lot of time making the city look nice and doing things and I really appreciate her and all of her opportunities. Also, the police department, Santa thing, you're constantly doing really good things to get the community involved and it's great. I can't make it to every event, I try to make it to all the city events, but if you have an online presence, if you send it to me, I'll try to share it and get it out. If I can't make it, I'll try to make sure that people get out to it. Also, want to comment on the lights, Main Street lights or the old Wagon Wheel park. Did you do those? They look really good. They look great. So, and I enjoy seeing our trees all lit up and would like to add a few more next year. Anyway, but I appreciate all that everybody does and that's all I have.
Okay.
Linda? I said I wasn't going to talk because I don't have a voice, but I just want to thank everybody that has helped with the Christmas lights. I understand Tracy was afraid I'd kick him if he didn't get those trees up good. I was told that.
That's what you were told?
Yeah, you know who told me. Anyway, and I appreciate it, it looks so good there on the corner. If we can just add some more, I wish we had more lights up at the park, even the spotlights to shine up in the trees, Christmas colors. Anyway...
You don't want purple?
Purple and, yeah, I don't get it. Anyway, I appreciate the staff for everything that they do and that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Ryan?
How's your time? Couple of things. One is, we had a site visit out to our business park, told about that about three weeks ago, and we had a report back from EDC Utah. It's called Project Stark. Anyway, they're, we'll start out with about a hundred and twenty-five jobs and end up with about six hundred jobs when it's a complete build-out and with a good salary, but we made the top place in Utah and so if they decide they want to come to Utah, we're their top choice, so, but they're looking a lot of other states also, but anyway, so it should be a good company and we'll keep pursuing that. Then the other thing, I just wanted to thank everybody for coming tonight and wish everybody happy holidays and look out for your neighbors and we'll make Payson a great place, so, and then thank the staff for everything they do and I probably have one more opportunity to thank you and have a happy holidays, but have a happy holidays, so thank you.
Okay. I think every good thing's been said and everybody has a good holiday. I know we have one more meeting before then, so anyways, we'll go ahead and close the staff and council reports and do we have any scouts here tonight by chance? Okay, we're going to go ahead and scratch the scout attendance and then I'm going to change things around and we'll have the oath of office done so that the judge can get out. So, I will turn the oath of office, or yeah, over to Judge Don Quest for the Officer Jeremy White. I'll turn it over, I guess, to Brad first.
Sorry, man, I just want to introduce individuals who are swearing in. Jeremy White, he's our newest officer. Jeremy's from Jewett County and he lives in Vineyard with his wife and his wife Stormy and his son Keegan. We're glad to have him on board and he started just a few weeks ago, so we appreciate him for taking out the duty to work with our department, so I'll let the judge come on board now and do his business.
Where'd he go? There he is. He has, like, he was working for it. Stand right there. Face the camera. Smile. I, Jeremy Tanis White.
I, Jeremy Tanis White.
Who solemnly swear or affirm?
Who solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support, obey, defend...
That I will support, obey, defend...
...the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
The Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office...
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
...with fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congrats.
Okay, we appreciate the police for all they do and, well, must be careful out there, so, um, well, and remember to wave to Linda, will you? When you drive by Linda, make sure you go like this. Stick your hand out the window, please. All right, that's your only job. Next thing on the agenda will be the CTC Mayor's Youth Recognition Award, so I'll turn that over to Kim.
Oh, there you are. I didn't see you. Come on, okay. Okay, our first one is Rachel Slack. She's from Payson High School. She's also on our U-City Council. So, Rachel Slack is the daughter of Cameo and Jason Slack. She's currently a senior at Payson High School and has accumulated a four-point O-GPA. Rachel is one of the very top students of Payson High School. She is a great representative for the school. She's currently a member of the Payson High School cheer team and she got special permission to come here tonight because she should be at the high school in her cheer outfit. So, we're going to excuse her right after that so she can go do her duty, but anyway, she's also a member of the Seminary Council, the Deca Club, and is part of the National Honor Society. She's also involved in other aspects of the school and community like our U-City Council. Miss Dero said of Rachel, "Rachel is an outstanding student. She's kind, intelligent, hardworking, and very creative. She is a leader among her peers by her actions and willingness to go the extra mile. I have also, I've always appreciated her efforts to help those around her, be a friend to the friendless, and excel in her academics. You can't find a better student anywhere." So, I appreciate that. You can come up here and take a quick picture because she has to go back to the high school. Normally, they don't let them leave. If they don't get there on time, they don't get to share, so...
All right, stand right here and, yeah, there we go. Okay.
She is from Payson Junior High and they said, "I had Haley last year in seventh grade honors math. She is such a positive person and always went the extra mile in my class. She has a great attitude and enthusiasm for everything she does. Haley is perfect for this award." And that was Mrs. Purcell. Haley works in the front offices and office director in third period each day. We have a very busy office and each day Haley jumps in without even being asked to answer phones, deliver notes, and any other task that needs to be addressed. She does each task without complaint and with a cheerful attitude. We rely heavily on Haley to help the office staff run smoothly. She's an amazing girl and we appreciate all that she does." And that was Mrs. Wilson. Haley is a very good student in my class. She is prompt and pays attention well. She sets a good example for her fellow students. I recommend her without reservation. That's Mr. Ward. As well as being an excellent student, Haley is an outstanding citizen and a kind person. I love having her inquire. Haley works hard and is very conscientious to, and is a friend to all. That was Mrs. Folds. Haley is always on top of the ball. She participates in many outside activities and is in the honors classes. She's willing to ask questions and help other students. She rocks at being an example to her peers. That was Ms. LeBaron. Haley is always willing to complete her assignment tasks from the office. She works hard and is very pleasant with everyone that she is associated with. Haley works well with the other students and is a dedicated student. She, in addition, she has excellent attendance. Well, that's great.
And also just to mention, you all take some pictures, okay?
Our next one is Abraham, and I'm not totally positive how to say that last name, and I know if I try, I'm going to say it really bad, so you come up and tell us how to say your last name.
He makes it sound really, really weird, so I won't even attempt it.
So, this is Abraham. He is an exceptional young man. Although new to our school this year, he is friendly to everyone. Teachers and students and others involved at Mount Nebo Junior High comment on his willingness to work, his kindness, and his can-do attitude. Abraham is conscientious about his learning and grades. He completes all assigned work, including extra credit on time. He fixes mistakes on assignments and tests to help him understand better. Although Abraham is focused on doing his best, he's also willing to help others achieve. Fluent in both English and Spanish, Abraham works pa, or patiently works with other Spanish-speaking students to help them understand the math. Because of his decision to learn, his compassion for others, and his commitment to being his best, I expect to see Abraham do impressive things in his life.
And parents, you're welcome to come up and take pictures. Turn it over for the Chamber Business of the Month.
Thank you. I, a couple of things, we want to be sure and thank everyone for their support of the chamber and this, before I give this award, which is one of my favorite duties as president of the chamber, I wanted to take a moment and thank the city council. This is my last as president and we'll have a new president next year, so I just want to take a quick moment and thank you. We appreciate the support that the city council has given us and really the city and as a whole. So, I am looking forward to giving this one. There's like, I would, we look at a lot of the businesses that we interact with in relation to how, sometimes it's the product they sell, sometimes it's the service they give. Our, this month's Business of the Month is Samacan Pharmacy, and it's kind of fun to see a business that doesn't treat you like a customer, that doesn't work with other businesses like they're another business, to that, to Samacan Pharmacy, to Kevin, his staff, his family. Everybody is family and I love that. There's a lot of businesses that you can just buy a product and you go home and that's great, but we really need our pharmacist to be someone who cares about us as much as we care about our own family. And Kevin and his entire team are exactly that way and they give back to the community so that the community can grow and that helps, that helps everyone. So, would like to congratulate Samacan Pharmacy as our Business of the Month for December. So, would you like to come up and say a few words?
I don't know about a few words. Oh, no, now she's got me really nervous about this. We were ecstatic to see that we were receiving this award and it's something that we pride ourselves on is knowing everybody by name as they come into the pharmacy and that's one thing that I've tried my hardest to do because I don't want to just know your name, but I want to know what's going on with your family as well to make you more like family in my life because to me, in order to, well, people come into the pharmacy, they're sad typically, and they're not always in the most happiest mood, but if I can make them smile and treat them like family, I know it helps with the healing process that they're going on and... Sorry about that, he's back and forth. But it's something that myself and the staff that works there as well, they take an initiative to get to know you and your kids, your brothers, your sisters, your parents. And with that, it makes it feel like family and feel more home. But thank you for this honor, we appreciate it.
And your family, you come up too? You can have the camera down.
Okay, next on the agenda will be the request for the use of an RMO-1, 2 Family Residential Overlay in Utah County Parcel 30-069-0129, located in 930 West and approximately 1150 South. And I'll turn that over to Jill.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have a request, as the mayor mentioned before us. This is sort of a two-step process with this development. I'll explain that in just a minute. So the area that we're looking at, there is a parcel that has not been developed that's along 930 West. The parcel's about 1130, 1150 South, as shown there on the screen. You can see that there's a lot of residential development around that. Some has been done over the last 20, 30 years. Some of it was more recent with the Wining River Estates development. It's located immediately to the west. So the overview of the proposal. There are two land-based applications or approvals that will need to be granted. The applicant is only requesting one at this point in time, which is the overlay zone. The overlay zone is a legislative decision of the City Council, which we're not obligated to grant. And so the applicant wanted to go through this process first to see if approval would be granted for the type of development, the density, the layout, the general layout. And upon approval, then he would start the second step, which would be the subdivision process. We always give the applicant the option of whether or not they want to run the processes concurrently or one right after the other. And in this case, the applicant chose to do one right after the other. So the overlays on request, in a nutshell, the applicant is, even though he is using the RMO-1 overlay zone, which would allow twin homes and duplexes, the applicant is not requesting duplexes and twin homes. He is wanting to do single-family dwellings only. He's wanting to use the flexibility allowed in that zone to accommodate building paths versus building lots. So they will be building paths with common area instead of the typical building lots that we see. There's a lot of reasons for that. One is just due to surrounding development. There's a limited access road, 930 West is a collector status street. And so we have limited access there. And then there's also the Dry Creek Channel that traverses the property. And so it's making it really challenging for an applicant to design it in a way without crossing some of those limitations on the property. He is looking for 10 units on the subject site. It exceeds the minimum requirement for the density of the underlying zone. And then the applicant would also like to implement the design guidelines that were approved as part of the overlay zone. That is another reason that he is choosing this option instead of doing a planned residential development. He's wanting to do the planned residential community. So the overlay zone will have the effect of establishing a few things tonight. So first is density, so the 10 units, the project layout and design, and the housing product, so the design. But any changes to any of those things would require additional approval by this body. So as we're moving forward, we still know that there's a lot of technical details that still need to be worked out as far as the subdivision process. And all of those requirements will need to be satisfied before you grant subdivision approval. But he's wanting feedback and approval based on the density, project layout, design, and the housing product. So this is a conceptual layout. Typically, we have north facing up, but in this case, north is actually to your right. So it shows 930 West is on the west side of the property. It's showing some of the future development to the east and to the north of the property. It does show how the lots will be laid out in relation to one another or to the property, how the trail system will continue along the Dry Creek Channel. That's consistent with-
So where is the trail system at?
So where you see those trees?
Yeah, that's just right off.
So the trail is adjacent to the-
I mean, is the city responsible for snow removal and everything in there?
The trail will be improved-
No, I mean the street.
So the street inside is proposed to be a public street. They are asking for a modified street cross-section, which is allowed in this overlay zone. It has been reviewed by staff, so engineering, streets, fire, they've all reviewed the layout, the turnaround for the development. Here's just project utilities. I know it's a little difficult to see. It's been included in your packet, but it is showing how the project utilities can be extended. A lot of the details of the utilities will be addressed at the subdivision stage. Here's a color rendering, shows a little bit better the relationship of the trail, the Dry Creek Channel, the access to the site, and the orientation of buildings. So this is the housing product that the applicant is proposing. Some of these are just pictures of other projects that the applicant has been involved in or has seen that would satisfy the design criteria establishing ordinance. And then just a couple more for you to look at. So public input recommendation of decisions. So the public hearing was conducted at the planning commission level. So any additional public comment tonight would be at the discretion of the City Council. So the planning commission had that. We provided a copy of the minutes in your packet.
What about sidewalks? Did that, I didn't see where it talked about sidewalks. Is that even part of this yet?
So with the subdivision, he'll have to address pedestrian access. He is showing the continuation of the sidewalk, which would be a continuation of what has been done to the south of the development.
So you're just talking, just putting the trail in and not along the side of the road?
So yeah, right now, it's just proposing that the trail would be continued to connect those neighborhoods, similar to what's to the south. Recommendation of the planning commission was to approve continued upon satisfying the requirements of the overlay zone and the second stage, which is related to the subdivision and the improvement of the property. So the decision of the City Council, while you can remand it back to staff or to the planning commission for additional review or consideration, approve with condition or deny it based on reasonable findings. And again, it is a legislative decision. That is the extent of my presentation, Mayor. The applicant, Jerry Robinson, is here and may have some additional information to share. And then I did receive an email from one of the residents in the area with some comments. The public hearing has been closed, but if you want me to read that in, I'd be happy to.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
So it says, "My name is Robert Mills, and my family and I recently moved to 12363 South, 1050 West in Payson. I will not be able to attend tonight's City Council meeting to support the proposed Ewok residential project along 930 West at about 1250 South. Please convey my support to the City Council members based on the following points. Number one, the proposed project is a good use of a difficult piece of property. It allows the site to be unified while allowing additional residential dwellings for the neighborhood. Number two, the proposed dwellings show a very high-quality product, similar to the upscale Harvest Park neighborhood in Mapleton. Number three, the improvement of the trail will be a benefit to the entire community." In closing, he goes, "As a professional planner, I'm impressed at the applicant's use of the site, attention to detail, and plan to improve the community. Thanks, Robert. Signed, Robert Mills." So again, Mayor, the applicant, Jerry Robinson, is here. Unless you have questions for staff first.
My only concern would be the sidewalks inside along this side of the road. I don't know about anybody else. I know you have the trail, but we just had an issue with that block. So I mean, to me, we're at that area down there as our premier area down by the temple, and we're still putting in, letting everybody put in these nails with no curb and gutter, or I mean sidewalks. I just have, I have an issue with that. That's my only issue. I don't know about anybody else. Other than that, I like the product, I like the layout. I think everything else is great. Do you want to, does the developer want to say anything? Do you have a pointer? Can I talk with a pointer? How could I talk? We get one somewhere. Can't point? Pleasure to be walking up, what?
I'll come up, he'll help you out.
Oh, thank you.
Well, they turned you off anyways.
I was already getting worried there. Sidewalk? We'll put in a sidewalk. We'd like to work with staff to determine which side to put it on. We don't want to lose the open space.
I think if you just had it on the outside of the houses, I think that would work.
Yeah. We'll work out a way so that it works, so people can walk without walking into the street. So it would not be 10-foot wide like, I mean, the city trail would be 10-foot wide concrete. This would be more conventional sidewalk.
No, you just have to do it up to four foot. City's, take it five foot now?
Typically, four.
What are they, Travis?
Five.
Five?
They're five there. Okay, I wanted to make some points. I think it's compatible with the neighborhood because, number one, we've gone door-to-door. This is a petition. Did you receive this in your packet? It has about 12 or 15 signatures. We've since got two more. Joseph Wright, who lives across the street, is here tonight, and he was going to speak in favor, but apparently it's not a public hearing.
I missed the other one, sorry.
So he's in favor. He just signed his petition, in favor of it. Density, we have a lower density than the surrounding properties. And the final point, I've met the neighbors. Let's go to the next. There we go. The property to the east, 5.7 units per acre. No open space. We went on the county records, measured the lots, the actual engineered calculations. There are 5.7 units per acre, we're 4.27. Our homes are closer together slightly, but look at the open space. When you drive to the temple or from the temple or drive to your friends, instead of looking over and seeing a bunch of homes, you're going to see open space. So it's almost like having a park and not having to pay for it. Let's go to the next place. There's the petition, which you've seen. Go ahead, keep going. Best design for the site. This is a clumsy site. It's skinny, it's got a diagonal line through it. It's difficult. A subdivision works very badly. I tried to, can you go to the next one? Let's see. It's a long, skinny piece. You can only access it right here on the end. There's not room enough for a cul-de-sac. It's got a diagonal stream running through it. It's got everything wrong with it for a subdivision. But in this case, we can turn that into a plus because the stream and the trees become a positive that the city will enjoy it forever. Let me go back to my notes here. Can you go back? Open space. Yes, okay, go to the next one. Okay. When you drive down here, it'll look like it does now, except with grass and plants, trees. It'll look like a park. Go to the next one if you would. It's an awkward site. It's got this ditch running through it. It's got the inlet box there. We're going to have to deal with that with railings to make sure it's safe because people will be driving and walking past it. But we will deal with that with the engineering staff. Okay, next. I think this will be a beautiful project because of all of these things. The materials, the garages setback, porches, varied roof forms, common area maintenance, 10-foot-long trail. And the average value we're expecting to be in the upper 3s, low 400s for single-family homes. At the risk of sounding frightful, they're going to look better than the homes to the west, you know, the retirement homes. And by the way, their density is closer to 6.3 units per acre. Ours is 4.2. Our density is-
They're a really nice-looking home.
Oh, thank you. Go to the next one if you would. This is a perfect example. Notice the stone on the front, and the stone wraps around the side, goes all the way to this inside corner. Up here, we have hardy. This is hardy. This is stucco. Aluminum and vinyl are not allowed under the new RMO-1 zone. Notice the roof forms changed direction. If you go to the project to the west- Heritage Village. All the roofs run the same direction with, I didn't find a single exception. In this case, the roof's buried. Southern on the corner, you've got a nice-looking side here, and you've got a nice-looking side here. Material changes, form changes, porches, strong entries. Some will have porches, some will have recessed entries. So I plan to make it beautiful. I'm an architect. It's a curse I have, I'm sorry. I don't know how to do ugly stuff. In fact, I feel badly when I do. So I think it'll be a nice community and a nice addition to the community, the neighbors. We've got petition support. We have lots of positive response. Lower density, what's not to like? Any questions? And a sidewalk.
And a sidewalk.
And a five-foot-wide sidewalk. Right, Travis?
I appreciate you going and talking to your neighbors. I really do.
We spoke to quite a few of them, by the way. Last week, there was a gentleman who came. He was concerned about water in a certain area. We discussed what we're going to do. By the way, we're retaining all of our water on the site. And any, there's also capacity, not intended as a detention pond, but with just the normal grading. We're a deterrent to any water that might come down the stream towards the neighbors, to our north. We would contain at least more than we do now. Right now, there's nothing to stop water, and there's a low point. So yes, we went around, and two people to the east were concerned about, I thought this was interesting. They were concerned about their water draining onto our site. And so I talked to them and said, "Not to worry, we'll work it out. It's probably just drained to a common swale in the middle, and we can easily get that to work." But it's been important to us to talk to the neighbors so that we don't end up with people opposing the project, not because they don't like it, but because they don't understand. We want to make sure they do. Any questions?
No, I have a couple of questions for Jill. I like, really like the project, the layout. I've just got a couple of questions on, could you go to the map, Jill?
Yes.
Or the layout, I guess. Just for fire, for fire trucks, things like that. I just wonder how that, is that turnaround, is that made for that between the two houses, eight and seven?
Where the fire chief is here, I may not be able to answer. And to come up to the microphone.
Yes, so we've worked with them to design, so that will be turnaround. The requirement, if you're more than 150 feet off the main road, you have to find turnaround. So to the cul-de-sac, work with them to do a hammerhead. It could use, it'll work perfect for us.
Great, great. And I have one more question, Jill. If we approve this as an overlay, and I'm not saying this is going to happen, but something falls through and they decide not to go through with the project, once the overlay is in place, can somebody come in and propose twin homes and things like that?
They would have to reapply because we are approving a project of 10 single-family homes with this general layout. So that's why we include that in our staff report, and we hope that your motion is very specific of those things. And so if somebody's wanting to come in, even if the applicant, if they were wanting to change it, something at the time of subdivision approval- time of subdivision approval, and if it modifies this overlay's unapproval, they would have to ask for an amendment to it.
Great, thank you.
Any other discussion?
It looks a lot better than the forts that I built there as a kid, so. It looks a lot better than Wade's.
This is, this is a good project.
All right, do we have a, do we have a motion?
I'll make a stand and you can help me, Jill. I make a motion that we approve the overlay zone for the property, the county parcel thirty zero six nine zero one two nine with the conditions of the overlay zone outlined by staff. And it seems like there's one other thing that the planning commission put in there. Oh, the sidewalk. And then what, there's one more thing the planning commission had?
Planning commission, what did they put?
Everything that goes with the subdivision.
Yes, they just wanted to make sure that it is tied to the subdivision approval, which would come at a subsequent meeting.
And I would lace like this, or the sidewalk on the east side where the houses, this house is, sorry. I don't know if that needs to be put in that motion or not. Yes. Well, we got a motion on the table, so. Did you want to add that to your motion or?
Where's the, could you go back to the map? So, where would that, put the sidewalk down?
I've taken it on that.
So, you're suggesting?
Where the houses are.
In and onto the houses instead?
Where the, where the trick is, you've got the, what do you call it over there?
Yeah, it needs to go by the front of the houses, right? I'll put that in there.
Okay. So, did, any, anything else in the motion? Okay, we got a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
We got a motion and a second. And we'll go real call, Mike?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, so we'll look for that. Okay, next thing on the agenda, request for preliminary final approval for Payson Business Park subdivision. And I'll turn that over to Jill.
Okay, Mayor, I have a short presentation on this one as well. Okay, so Payson Business Park. So, this is being proposed by staff. It's the redevelopment agency of Payson City that owns the property. So, we, it affects four parcels in the business park. So, that map just shows where the business park is located, for those of you that don't know that. Overview of the proposal, again, the property owner, the applicant, is the redevelopment agency of Sub-Payson City. The request is preliminary final plot approval of the subdivision consisting of seven commercial or industrial lots and one open space parcel. So, this is being initiated by a request, or Payson City is looking to sell property in the business park and we have been approached by various, or potential buyers to buy property. And is what initiated that, is one potential buyer is interested in purchasing four acres, but they want to have two, two-acre lots. And so, that, and so, then we took a hard look at all of the city property in the business park to see how we could modify them in order to help with selling that property. And so, that is the result that you see here with the proposed subdivision. So, each, because it is non-residential development, we don't know who the end user is. And so, we don't know what size of infrastructure they need, where their access point should be. And so, all of that will be addressed at the site plan stage. And so, tonight, we're really just looking at the configuration and the number of parcels. And in the future, we'll be looking at ownership as well as the improvement of the developers. So, these are parcels that are included in the subdivision now. This is how they're configured now. And this is how they are proposed to be configured. The two that I mentioned initially, this is one parcel at this point in time and they want to have two separate parcels. We are showing that this would be open space that will be used as an entry feature to the park. So, that will remain as open space and then the other parcels would be it. Plunder Design is actually, the city has sold this triangular piece here. Plunder Design is under construction at this time. They have an option to expand into this lot, but we do have some proposal of real estate purchase contracts proposed for some of the other properties in the business park. So, public input again, it was done at the planning commission level. I believe we only had one gentleman that spoke at the public hearing. I can't remember what it said in your, in your city council packet. But that was completed, it's been included in your packet. The planning commission recommended approval based on a couple of things. First, the staff conditions. Secondly, that lot one, which is that entry feature, be labeled as open space. And then, they wanted clarification on the proposed vacation of lot number fourteen, which has been taken care of by the city surveyor who prepared this plat. So, the decision tonight is regarding preliminary and final plot approval. So, you can remount it back to staff if you feel like additional information is necessary or you can approve those conditions or deny. And if it is denied, it's based on reasonable findings. That was all I have, Mayor.
Do we have any discussion on this? Or a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the preliminary and final approval of the Business Park subdivision plat G with the parcel stated in the, in the Business Park Development Zone.
We got a motion. We got a second. Okay, we got a, we got a second. Mike, Linda? And any other discussion? Is he none? Mike?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Okay, let's do these, these two and then we'll move a couple of things. Well, I'd like to move down and go to item number nine. On the title two, our new mayor's here and he's got to go his anniversary, so we're going to lighten him up early. So, we wanted to go over the title two.
Mayor, I'm, I'm one that brought that up, so I'd like to table this. I'd like to make a couple of comments on it. One is, I've been working on this for probably about nine months now, trying to, we've had some conflicts between the duties of the mayor and the city manager. And so, I've turned, asked Mark, our city attorney, to try to look at some of the language on that to make that more clear and understandable. And this has not come from the staff or from Dave. It's something that I've been working on and I figured this would be a good time to do it as we're having one mayor leave and another one come in. But I've talked with, with the mayor-elect, Bill Wright, and we would like to table this until February. We'll be back. We want to address some of those concerns, then we'll be back. So, I'd like to table that until February.
I'll second that. I have no comments on that.
I think that it's better to have the next council do that. Kind of looks tacky doing it right now. It looks like a human deal. So, anyways, we have a motion in a second to, to what? Mike?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. All right. We'll go back to item number three, DeHart Agricultural Protection Area. I'll turn that over to Jill.
Okay, and I, you do not see Mr. DeHart here, but it's pretty straightforward on this. There is an existing agricultural protection area that was placed on the Emerald Turf Farm prior to annexation. So, it was done, it was completed in April two thousand and ten. The annexation took care, took place later in that year. The applicant has been working with a developer in order to acquire five point seven four acres of land for development, so it does have to be removed from the ag protection. So, the box shown there in red is the, is the small area that will be removed. It is the intention of the owners of the land to retain the rest of the acreage in the ag protection. So, it is only removing the five point seven four acres. State code does require action by the land use authority. In this case, it's the city council. So, we just need a motion regarding the removal of the five point seven four acres.
Okay, we got a motion. No discussion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the removal of those five point seven acres from the ag protection.
We got a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, unanimous.
One, one nice thing is it's, that's an ag protection, but it's not a meat farm, it's a turf farm. So, I'm very happy with that.
Okay, next thing is a resolution for appointment to the library board. I will turn that over to Steve.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. This is a request to have the council approve the appointment of Kara Hicken of Payson to be on the library board. She, you can see her, her application in bio on this. She's been a Payson resident for the past couple of years. She has a degree in dental hygiene and she's a stay-at-home mom. She has kind of a cute thing here in this. She says she's been a librarian of her own collection of books since the third grade, when she made her little brother and friends check out the books with their own homemade library cards. She finds them. She loves libraries, reading quilting and spending time with family. She also volunteers for hospice and at her children's school. And we're just delighted to have her. She's requested several times to be a member. Is she here? She's not. I'm sorry. I notified her, but she couldn't make it.
Hey, do we need a motion and a?
We do have a resolution, so if you move to adopt the resolution.
Okay, we have a motion, approved resolution.
Yeah, we motion that we approve the resolution, appointing Kara Hicken to the Payson Library Board.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Is he none? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you. One more quick thing, just to thank you. I'm sorry.
Do a roll call, man.
Roll call.
Aye.
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 Okay. Motion carries.
Councilman Hardy mentioned the chamber a few minutes ago and we had some, the chamber was gracious enough, the mural project had donated fifteen hundred dollars for that in matching funds in conjunction with Santa Claus Chamber. So, we were just grateful to the chamber, so very, very grateful. And we hope to see that Payson mural project moving forward, Charlie.
I think it's going to be a good thing for Payson.
Thank you.
All right, yeah, thank you. All right. Next thing is a resolution for a development agreement with Wilcock State subdivision. I'll turn that over to Jill.
Sorry. Sorry, I thought I was finished.
No. One more then.
Yes. So, the Wilcock State subdivision is phase two of the Temple Rim subdivision. Anyway, it was the request of the Wilcock family that they use their name in the subdivision, so that's why it's not Temple Rim let B. Anyway, and so, it is consistent with the terms and conditions and the design criteria of Temple Rim Phase One. So, staff is requesting the city council approve the agreement. Currently, the, the landowner does not develop property. He's just an investor. And so, he's looking for individuals to purchase the property. So, we don't, we're using the applicant's name in the agreement, or the property owner's name in the agreement at this time. It will likely change once he sells that development. But, but everything is consistent. We're requesting approval.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Mayor, I'll move that we approve resolution twelve oh six, two thousand and seventeen, authorize and authorize you to sign on behalf of Payson City.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Mike, Doug? Roll call.
Aye.
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 What was that, Linda?
Thank you.
Did you say something?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next thing is a resolution, agreement for the sewer lift station on the east side. I'll turn it to Travis.
Mayor and council, this, as you're a member of Wasatch Mental Health, is, their building is pretty close to being done, I believe. It looks good. We, obviously, they had to do a sewer lift station to be able to accommodate where that building was because there was no sewer there. And where the plant is, they couldn't, you know, it was lower in elevation. So, through the discussion, we decided that as a city, it would be in our best interest to make that more of a regional sewer lift station instead of have another private one. And then, you know, anyone else that wants to develop would have to keep adding lift stations and we'd add them all over. So, we, we got, you know, with the engineer that they had started designing it with and, and got a design that we felt worked. And so, the lift station is almost completed, but we just needed to get an agreement so that everyone was on board with, you know, percentages and that and how it'll get reimbursed. So, both Wasatch Mental Health and Scott Phillips, they own property in that area. And the lift station is actually owned property that Scott owns. So, we just wanted to get a formalized agreement on how that payment would happen. And then, you know, we'll deal with reimbursements as each individual development comes on. But.
And Wasatch all agreed on this?
Yes.
So, they will sign off on it? Okay. All right, we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution number two, two seventeen dash twelve dash oh six, authorizing Payson City approving and authorizing staff to proceed with negotiations and an agreement to, for participating in the lift, sewer lift station.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Motion in a second by Linda. Let's have a, any other discussion? Real call, Mike?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay, motion carries. We've got unanimous, I think. It was kind of a, all right, a resolution. And then, next is a resolution amendment for the interlocal cooperation agreement. He talked county regarding communities of care. I'll turn that over to Dave. Oh, the Tour of Utah, sorry. I scratched it off before I got to that point.
So, Mayor and council, we met with representatives of the tour. They would like to come back to the Payson area for the two thousand and eighteen tour. When we met with them, they were talking about maybe changing us from a finished city to a start city after they, because they were looking at over in Lehigh area. But as they, as they talked about it, they emailed us back and said they would like to keep us as a finished city, which I think is a good thing. So, we prepared a resolution of support. The council's willing to have the Tour of Utah. We would have to appropriate some money to the budget amendment and make sure we cover those costs. We do try to get sponsors to help alleviate some of those costs. That's what the resolution is, just so they can prepare and get ready. We'll have a formal agreement that will come back to the council. One of the concerns we had is the number of hotels. They usually, usually require a whole city to cover. And we don't have that many hotel rooms in Payson. And previous councils have not wanted to pay for hotel rooms in other cities. And so, we worked with them. They amended, the sheet said they would put that in the agreement that we would only be required to, to cover the cost of the hotels in our, in our city. I think it's sixty-three or sixty-five rooms. So, it's all good. I got a call, I just wanted to update you a little though. I got a call yesterday and they are toying with the idea and they would like if the city would be willing to have us be the start city and the finish city, to do both of them.
Oh, really?
And they would have, they might have some, some loops within Payson City. And then, I can send you kind of what they were thinking, maybe go out to Genoa, negotiate, back to Nephi, up the loop and back down Payson Canyon. So, the, the only increased cost it would be would just be like some police service in the morning time. Instead of just having the finish, we would have the start. We could have some different activities and we would have the finish. So, I told them I'd bring that up. If you guys are amenable to that, they may pursue that. If you really have some hesitation, they, they would try something else. But they, they are looking to be both the start and the finish city this year in Payson.
Does that happen very often?
No, some, some cities they do. Like Park City's always a start and finish. And they have, Salt Lake City, when they had the circuit around downtown Salt Lake City, but they haven't, they haven't done it in some of the smaller cities. So.
I, I think it's a great thing. One, one point of order here, the resolution number shows two thousand and eighteen.
Unless the years, unless we're in office, it shouldn't be out a long time ago.
Oh, she said she already changed it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's on there, two thousand and eighteen, I believe.
Mine says two thousand and eighteen, if I'm looking at it.
So, if the council approves this resolution, then we will come back with a formal contract presented to the council. And we would, probably our next budget amendment, we would ask to appropriate some money to cover these costs, then we can start working on it.
Okay, fantastic. Go ahead. Nice, that is fantastic. One thing I would say.
One thing I would say is that probably want to try to reach out to the homes on the route a little earlier, give them more of a heads up. But beyond that, I think this is a great thing first.
And once we finalize the route, we will do that. The other thing is, because we, we're probably the only city in Utah County this year. We're going to see if we can get Utah Valley tourism to help with some of the costs, and hopefully help promote it. So, and the tour's been talking to them as well. So hopefully, we can have some partnership to help cover some of the costs as well.
One other thing is Doug's talked about quite a bit about trying to get a three-year contract with the Tour of Utah. And last discussion with him, that they have, they're very favorable of trying to say, you know, without saying that they'd like to come back to us, you know, every so.
Be nice to budget regularly, so we can plan a little bit, and it's not all at once. But I think it's a good, good to be on the map.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2006 to 2017, authorizing the city of Payson to just pay as a stage finish host and possibly as a start for the 2018 Tour of Utah.
Okay, I'll second. We got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Mike?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries.
Thank you for asking about those hotels and getting it slid us.
Next thing is a resolution for the, on the interlocal cooperation agreement with Utah County regarding communities of care.
So Mayor and council, we've had our Communities of Care Coalition, and Kim Lefler's been our coordinator for quite some time. And we have an agreement with Utah County. Based on the SHARP surveys and some of the things we want in the school, they feel like that South Valley, Payson this area has some definite concerns with some of the drugs and alcohol and different things like that. And so they wanted to make this a full-time position in this area. And Kim's done a fabulous job with the federal government, who owns money to the state. The state, they agreed to fund that position full-time. And so the agreement with Utah County, the county administers the grant money, but it comes from the state. But they've appropriated sufficient amount to cover a full-time employee. And so we're bringing it to the council. If the council would approve the agreement, then we would move forward to make that a full-time position, and hopefully make more of a difference in what we can do at the schools and the community.
Okay, do we have any discussion or a motion?
You'll spend more time in the schools, is that the way it works?
Well, we do. We have programs through Strangening Families, Parents Empowered. We do those a couple of times a year. We also have the SHARP surveys that the schools do every two years. We look at that data and then see what we focus on in the community that's most concerned. We can't focus on every aspect. We also have, Santaquin now contributes into this program. They contribute a portion.
Does Genoa contribute?
Goshen and Genoa contribute a portion. And then Payson contributes a portion. Most of it is covered by grant money. And the hope with the full time is that she can dedicate more time and focus more on the issues to see if we can get a better handle. We do the prescription drug take backs twice a year. It's been a good program, and hopefully we can make more of a difference. And the states, if they want to discover the costs.
Good, fantastic.
Yeah, first of all, thanks, Kim, for your hard work. And then I would like to make a motion passing Resolution 1206, 2017, approving, authorizing, and adopting interlocal cooperation agreement with Utah County, expanding the substance of youth prevention services and communities of care prevention model in Payson areas.
Okay, we've got a motion. Do we have a second? So moved.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to lose Kim was there. I should have had her some of that sleep, so, you want to say anything?
Well, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. But hopefully, it will give me more time to work with the schools. I've only been 24 hours a week up until now, which really limits what I can do. But full time, I should be able to.
Perfect.
Hopefully, do it for the community.
Good. I know some people in the county, and this is a well-regarded program, and very important.
Okay, we got a motion and a second on the table, so any other discussion? Seeing none, Mike?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Next thing on the agenda would be other discussion regarding the National League of Cities Service Line Warranty Program.
Mayor and council, I don't know if you've looked through the materials that were in the packet. This is a company that has been endorsed by the National League of Cities and Towns. But it's a service line warranty program, somewhat like a insurance company. But they do offer residents of this, if we wanted to back this, they would offer the residents or communities to purchase external water service line warranty, sewer septic line warranty, and interior plumbing and drainage warranty. It's strictly voluntary. The only thing that the, I guess the thing that the companies do throughout the country, and I think in Utah, Salt Lake City, Orem City, and I think it's Clearfield, they are participating in this program. But if we were to endorse or support this program, it is strictly voluntary for the residents. But the marketing, the advertising, the letters that would go out to the residents would have a letter from the city saying that they support the program, and it helps in marketing the program. But what it is, if you had a, the city has to maintain the service lines out, the main laterals. But from the main lateral to the home is the homeowner's responsibility. And especially in Payson, a lot of cities, it's aging infrastructure. And if you have a blockage in the sewer line, and it's on your side of the main line, then it's your responsibility to hire a contractor to go fix the line. So this is a, this is a, basically a warranty insurance-type program that people can sign up for if they want to.
There's contractors that come out and fix them.
They use local contractors.
I guess that's my issue, we're going to be just a stepping stone for promotions, or what?
No, I don't think they.
Because it's not, you know, everybody else.
It's not part of the city. They would, if they are in Payson, like in Salt Lake, they'd try to get local contractors that would be on a list, and they would send them out. Because they're paying, they pay up to $8,500 per claim. So they would hire a contractor to come and fix their problem if they have the coverage.
I know there's a lot of them that do that total coverage, that's why I'm saying.
Do they?
Are we going to start stepping on toes?
That's why we don't have, I mean, personally, I don't have a dog in the fight here. If you guys think it's worthwhile, let the citizens choose. You can, if not, the mayor, if you may be right, there may be other companies that try to offer these as well.
That was kind of my concern, whether we'd be getting ourselves in trouble with some of these other companies, and how we manage potential risk that we might.
I mean, and you're living in everything, it's plumbing and sewer, basically.
It's water, sewer, and indoor plumbing that you can purchase.
So is there any liability on the city if they go out of business or don't meet their contractual obligations, or the city is?
I doubt there will be any liability in the city. It's just a warranty package, either just guaranteed package, warranty, your own comfort. We call it heating, air conditioning, your own comfort warranty. No, it's just, it's just a bill for them to say, well, we're going to advertise it, but we're going to put the Payson Cities logo on it. That's where I have my issue.
I think that's where my challenge is too, is I say, if they're out for a private enterprise selling their business, maybe if we add an RFP and let everybody respond to it, or we send out, here's a list of people that can provide this service. That might be a different thing, but just for one company, I have a real struggle with that.
Well, what I'm thinking is what they're going to do is just call their different companies, but they could come in from trouble, Spanish, wherever. So I don't think you can get a full lot. I mean, you may get a few, but.
This tell you it's the National, to the League of Cities and Towns, or is it just a similar?
Not the local Utah League of Cities, it's the national organization that has endorsed the program. Like I said, I think there are 400 some odd cities around the country. There's three in Utah that are using the service. If it doesn't seem that much of an interest, that's fine. We just, they've approached just a few times, and so we looked at it. At staff level, said, you know, the council.
I don't have a problem with it, but I'm good. I'm good either way, but I don't have a real problem with it.
Okay, we have a motion or? Or we drop the flag, the motion?
Okay, it was just a discussion, but it sounds like it's not a whole lot of interest, so we'll just move forward anyway.
I'd like to see a sample or something of what they're really talking about writing. This is a pig in a book right now.
Yeah, I mean, there's material.
Yeah, we've got a bunch of stuff on it. Okay, we're down to a resolution approving an amendment as sales listing agreement. But we have a closed session before we go ahead and do that, so with the redevelopment agency. So do we have a motion to go out of council in a closed session, and then we'll come back and then go into the remarks? Okay, we've got a motion and a second. We'll go, we'll call again, Mike?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, we will go in the back room and Dave's office. We'll go back five minutes?
Yeah, we don't need a lot of time.
Five minutes, and then we'll adjourn.